You're gonna have to turn that down a little bit. You're gonna have to turn that down a little bit. Keep going. Hello? Keep going. More, more. Oh, wait a minute. Up just a little bit. Okay, that's, no, down just a little bit. Yeah, let's try to. Yeah. So, how do we do this? We call. A little confused about it. All right. Then the review. We have, we have to put the, oh, you have the bidding stuff, right?
Yes.
Add the, oh, we got that on there already. Right. I think it's all right. The minutes, did everybody sign the minutes? Go in favor. I. Ed, how do you vote on the minutes? Payroll and manifest been reviewed and signed. One land use change tax form signed. See the. Grant reimbursement for the truck. And the letter to the residents was for the position.
That's for Westlock and Red Oak.
Okay. Need a motion to sign the FW web credit app. Go in favor. And we can scoop right down the new business. We have mowing proposals. I have one copy of them.
Yes, if you just want to read. Read the amount.
All right, we got a. Looks like we got five bidders. Turn that down just a little bit. Robert, even around 6410 for the year. Can Clement come in? 6400 for the year.
How much was the one for Glancy?
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred.
And then LMGO.
Yeah, is the one that's 2200, is it, they're aware of everything they have to do?
It looks like from the proposal, I mean, quote, it looks like. It has everything on it.
That's for the year. And the bid stated every building. And so when they came in. Parade Road. Right, I verified that they understood it was four buildings.
My work will include spring and fall cleaning, weekly maintenance, mowing, weed eater, and blowing. Going down packing lots, walkways. Catching grass. Catching grass and.
And I also explained that these bids were strictly for mowing, weed eating. Around these buildings. Anything extra, if they saw areas, distressed areas or wanted to do some extra work, that is not part of this bid. It would have to come before the board for approval. Because we only have a limited amount in budget.
This is landscaping my grass off, LMGO.
Where are they out of? Where are they from? You're from Barnstead?
Yep, Senate Barnstead.
So, in order to give the board a fair value for the two people that bid per year, I estimated, and then there were people that certainly bid for mowing. And so I looked at last year and the year before, and I estimated eight mowings to come up with an approximate per mowing amount. Certainly, the people that have bid per year, if it's more than eight mowings, their price certainly looks a lot better. You know, it's however.
It looks like these other ones are at six and eight hundred. What the board like to do?
Actually, it's Ryan Treadwell, that is our current lawn care person. He submitted a bid as well.
He was the second lowest.
Right.
Came in at thirty-nine. Although his does say that it would be more if it was more than eight mowings.
Did LMGO give a price if it was more than eight mowing?
He just said season.
If he, if they, I mean, Karen's verified with them, they understand what they have to do and they vocal, they're willing to do it. I mean, that's a pretty big difference. How do we pay this, Karen, out, like in installments? At the end of the season, at the beginning of the season?
Every, every mowing, they will submit.
Okay, so they're not getting paid upfront, so?
So for the, the ones that are doing it seasonally, we'll just have to, if they want to get paid for mowing, then it's just going to have to, you know, we'll average it out so that this whole season comes to twenty-two however they want to get paid, but that will be max. I would think they would want to get paid every mowing. We're certainly not going to pay that upfront.
Well, that was my concern. I mean, we had, I mean, since they're new to us, if, if we end up going with that, then we're not, out anything if it goes.
Right, and they all have insurance. That's last year and the year before, yes. It averaged about two per month, you know, and of course, you know, if it's dry or very rainy. Well, I think it's just addressed after the first mowing.
It's just a cold board. It's not like a contract.
Right, and it wasn't sealed bids. It was just a proposal from online.
And they're gonna provide insurance.
They, right, and they all have insurance, so they'll provide certificates for us.
The board doesn't want to, we have to go with the lowest bid, but in reviewing those, I don't see a reason to say not to go with the lowest bid. If that makes sense. And, you know. So I'll make a motion that we award the mowing to LMGO at a price of twenty-two hundred per year total. Make a motion to award the mowing contract to LMGO, which is, what is it again?
Landscaping my grass off.
Landscaping my grass off. And it's twenty-two hundred for the year, and that includes mowings, cleaning up, batching, overseeding areas.
I'll second the motion.
Ed, how do you vote? Or do you want to have a discussion? Oh, yes.
And this is not a contract, correct?
No.
So, you know, if, if there's an issue, obviously, we can revisit. And I would think someone in town, they're gonna see their work.
Right.
Do their job.
This is a spreadsheet with paving numbers.
If you, if you don't mind, I'd like to provide an explanation. I asked Jason Levitt to come in and review all the bids. He, especially with his expertise, working for DOT and in this field for many years, I thought it would be nice to have someone else review this and prepare the spreadsheet. So, he, some of the proposals estimated some different amounts of tonnage, so on and so forth. So Jason took the actual length and width of all the roads, all the tons, the square yards of exactly what each road would require and used those figures to come out with the results, so that everybody was on, all on the same playing field. And then he's giving you a total at the bottom. The yellow is, represents areas that were not followed in the proposal. The orange areas were a little inconclusive. They also did not list specific amounts. And then, so I don't know if you wanted to list for the public, Mr. Chairman, now that you have total, total amounts.
Looks like GMI came in around six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-point-nine-six. R and D came in at six-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-three-point-ninety-one. Advanced came in six-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-eighty-nine-point-two-seven. And Busby came in at six-hundred-and-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-seven-point-six-five. I don't understand a couple things.
George has not seen this spreadsheet because Jason was able to send it to me just late this afternoon, just before the meeting, as a matter of fact.
It looks like R and D, you said the yellow was what?
The yellow means that they did not follow the bid requirement.
What do you mean, for a flagger?
Yep, they did not include that. It was supposed to be listed separately, and you'll see that on their quote, their bid, they just have it at the bottom of the page, traffic control and sweeping by others. It was supposed to be, they were to provide the traffic control and list the amount.
Well, this just says flag. This doesn't say anything about traffic.
Well, it's all the same, flaggers. They had to do their own flaggers and traffic.
So they didn't, they didn't provide the information requested in.
The bid.
The bid, correct. And they, Karen, sorry, the end of box is about the, the, not the yellow, but the whatever.
Orange.
The orange, I didn't call that orange, but with dried aprons and hand method, what is that? Why is that? What's the significance of that?
Well, we asked them to provide the, so the, the driveway aprons certainly, as, as you, you know, you're going up the road.
Yeah.
They will cut in every driveway, so because it's separate from just the road, the amount of tonnage that the road would use, we asked them to list that separately as well.
But, okay, so yeah, my, my question, so it was requested to be provided in the bid and it's not been provided.
Right, and it just, it wasn't stated whether they included that in all the tonnage or not. But it wasn't listed separate.
George, you have one of these? Could you please get one copy of one of these? What's joint trimming, George? Joint trimming.
George, why don't you sit there and talk into the microphone, sorry?
Come on up here and see us.
All right, joint trimming is where you start off, like, from the existing road where you're paving. So you joint that, so you match into it.
Well, it looks like GMI is charging three-thousand-four-hundred-and-eight dollars for that, and R and D's not charging anything.
No.
Well, yeah, but if you add in the flaggers, you need to increase R and D's price by roughly anywhere between thirteen to sixteen thousand.
Yeah, and I'm wondering why shoulder gravel much, much higher with R and D? Is there a reason for that?
I don't know. I haven't talked to them really much since we sent the bids and got them back. Yeah.
Well, Advanced is roughly close to the price for.
But all their, all their price for tonnage is way higher than they else. Does this mean that GMI didn't put in anything for drive aprons either? Because they're at zero.
There's zero.
So they didn't do it either, right?
If it's that zero, correct.
Okay, so GMI should have an orange there as well.
Well, and they've been, yeah.
Okay, so they didn't do it either. Or it's free.
Right, and it says zero dollars, so there, it's included or, right, one or the other.
Now, a lot of times when they do the drive aprons, sometimes they don't do handwork. They slide out with the paver as they're going along and then come back in.
I think it looks like GMI is including it. I mean, I'm presuming any joints and driveways is probably the apron, possibly, maybe. I don't know what I'm talking about. Is that what GMI might mean?
Could be. I don't know, they.
Did we check on, on Busby as far as subcontracting the paving?
No.
Because they don't pay.
Well, apparently, I, I didn't inquire because they submitted a bid and they have to stick to their bid. It certainly wasn't in the RFP that they couldn't sub out. I think of, I think other companies do as well.
As long as they provide all the insurance paperwork, you can always sub out.
I should have bid on it then. Should have subbed it all out.
You can't, you're on the board.
Right? I don't know. I wouldn't give a paving bid. I'll do paving. What do you think, George? Got anything, anything to add? Track? What do you want to do?
I don't see, other than the driveway aprons on, you know, R and D and GMI. Like I said, and sometimes, you know, when they're doing those driveways, they slide the paver out, and then when they get to the end of it, they bring it back in and keep going. Because you're only going in there, maybe a foot and a half, two feet in the most, and you're not drugging pavement half that driveway.
Six inches on my driveway.
What's that?
It was six inches on my driveway.
Well, because that's how they knew who lived there. So, as far as the shoulder gravel goes, I mean, it could take more, it could take less, but I don't think it's going to take more. You know, and a lot depends on when you reclaim it, depends on what's left and, you know, after fine grading, a lot of, you know, it would be brought back in like we did the first year. So it could be less. So other than that, the numbers look pretty fair. So, as far as the bids go, I mean, R and D did a phenomenal job last year. I'm very happy with their work. And they're great to work with. I mean, even during the winter, they were checking in to see how the roads were holding up. You know, from time to time, see any cracking? No. You know? So.
Have we used GMI or Advanced in the past, or even Busby?
I don't know if you've ever used Advanced. I don't think we've ever used GMI. And Busby did our reclaiming the first year.
Right.
But they don't do paving. They'd have to have a subcontractor. So, that being said, I mean, I'd like to stick with R and D because I know what they're doing for work, and they, they did extra last year. They gave us extra mix and we really didn't
Could you explain what happened with the piece of machinery that Barnstead paid for half of for repair? Was one of our drivers driving it?
No, that was their reclamer.
Okay, so we paid some portion of repairs for that?
I didn't think we did.
I think you were gonna check on that, Karen. I think it was not in the contract bid, but I don't know if there was another.
Because they ran in, they ran into some real tough going on Province Road when they were reclaiming and took a lot of teeth out and then broke a couple of items on the reclamer.
Now, what was the piece of equipment that our?
We just had ran their sheepfoot roller.
No, that's what it was.
Yes, and that's how it was.
Yeah, and we put fuel in it.
Right, they charged us the full price and then when we went back, then they cut it in half.
And they cut it in half.
So we shared that price. But I, I only want to put this out there because I spoke with Jason and I asked Jason when he did these bids. That price, but I, I only want to put this out there because I spoke with Jason and I asked Jason when he did these bids. If this comes up, what does the state do as far as bids? We were very explicit this year. The board asked that we, we refine our proposals. And so we were very explicit. I just asked Jason, what does the state do if the bid specs aren't met, and he said they throw them out. Now, again, it's up to the board to decide, but I, I just want to say, how fair is that to the other companies that did meet your specs? And just to consider that, because.
I agree, Karen, I think that's a consideration. I mean, we did this, right, I, if, everybody needs to be on a level playing field.
What's that? Oh, no, and I haven't talked to anybody from R and D, and I haven't talked to nobody, you know, because I didn't know anything about any of this until just now.
So, uh, it clearly states for R and D, traffic control and sweeping by others unless specified otherwise. It's not, not specified in here, so basically R and D's price would go up to 629,553. And I'm basing it on the lowest flagger cost, which is 13,000. Did not base it on what both, um, GMI and Advance came in at, uh, 16,000, and they're both, I think, at the 429. So we're looking at, and I don't know how many square feet, square yards, or what with the paving would be lost with the 20 something thousand dollar loss, but someone's going to have to pay for the flaggers. Bottom line, that would be flaggers.
Came up with that pretty quick. How long do you have this paperwork? We just got it.
No one has seen it. Jason, and you can ask Jason.
You got the bids over there?
He's just sent it to me.
Adding 612,000. These are the bids right here, they were just handed to me.
They're the same bids I just passed out to everyone tonight.
Look at, I added 13,000 to 612. That's pretty easy.
All right, I think we need to, um, I, I have some questions about all this, and I want to talk to Jason myself.
Um, I asked him over the phone tonight if he want, if the board wanted to speak with him, he will come in.
We, we should have done this, we should have done, we should have done our paperwork. And we didn't do it.
I, I don't know if George or Karen, either one of you, but, um, I'd like some information if we can find out if any towns in our area or whatever have used Busby or GMI. And how satisfied they are with their work and if they had any issues or anything along those lines.
Like I said, I've used Busby on reclaim.
Well, they, obviously they've bid on this, so someone's going to pay, and if they did work for another town, then someone paid for them for another town. If they bid on a paving project for another town.
But I think with the state, pretty much going only, what, with Continental and whoever the other person, Pike or whatever, I would imagine the other paving companies would be like the, maybe the Merrells and all that stuff, that's a subcontractor, we don't know. Now, obviously, when is the paving supposed to be starting? Because, again, we don't want to run into delays because we're already going to run into an increase starting June 1st when the asphalt jumps up.
Right, and there, there isn't any way any of these companies can do the work before June.
Right.
Um, we are asking that they have to complete them by the end of September.
Yes.
Um, you may want to find out which ones could get in here, in here sooner, because we would anticipate the AC price to go up every month.
And I still have a lot of work to do as far as culverts to put in on these roads.
Correct.
Which next week we're starting on culverts.
How's Province Road coming?
We're going to just do the culverts on that and we'll be ready. We got to put some gravel here and there to build up a few places, and that road would be ready. I'm looking at probably three weeks, four weeks at the most, and that one would be ready.
So we'll have Jason come to the next meeting.
Yes, I'll ask Jason to come to the next meeting in, again, that's why I asked Jason to do this. He has the expertise and he has nothing in this game, except looking out for the town. He's a resident.
Thank him for, that's a lot of work. We appreciate it.
It is a lot of work, and he came in just on last Thursday, uh, took the information home, and as I said, he just sent it to me. I have the email this afternoon at around 4:00. So.
Please come pay our appreciation, because it was very nice of him to do that.
So, you know, we'll put this on hold until the next meeting.
I, I think we should, George. I think we should make sure that everything is right. We've had a chance and opportunity to look at everything and ask questions. This is the first time we've seen this.
Right.
You know?
Absolutely.
Jason, as a matter of fact, was on the phone with her, so he just got back to her two minutes ago.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's probably for everybody's best interest.
Absolutely. I can tell him to come in with some answers. That way it's in this building, not just on my phone.
Come in with answers, this Karen needs to call R and D to find out what the flagger price is. Busby to see if he's going to say who the, the other person is, the subcontractor is, and bottom line is, it's going to be a matter of what the price is. Because we don't know for a fact if R and D included flaggers somewhere in the price. It does not look like it according to the contract, but that's going to impact the price. And then we revisit.
You want to call him?
Yes, yes, I think it's only fair that keeps you out of it, George, as well.
I would rather stay out of it.
Also find out why his gravel's right.
Want me to ask Advanced too, because they were only $2 different. Advanced was $42 a ton and R and D is 45.
I'm not sure. Advances is pretty high on almost everything. Like, see.
We haven't decided anything on the reclaiming. We haven't decided anything on the reclaiming. Well, we don't know what we're going to reclaim yet. I mean, as far as.
Oh, okay.
We haven't even decided which projects are going to get done yet. I mean, we're not under any illusion, we're going to be able to do all of this, so that's another thing we need to decide first, what's going to be the priorities that are on the list.
I want to make these, these roads black that we already have done before we make any more of them dirt.
Right, okay. Karen, you'll get the answer to those questions?
Yes, for the next meeting, and I'll have Jason.
See if Jason can come here.
All right.
Ricky should probably move up the 5:30 appointment since he has six. Is Dave coming or?
He's not here.
Oh, you're the lucky one.
Oh, oh, oh. Yes.
Ready for you.
And I am like the third backup person, so I'm going to do my best, and I'm going to hope it's accurate and adequate, and both of those things. We'll see what happens. Rock and roll. Maybe. So, so what you have in front of you is, um, a proposal for David's email, um, which gives a great amount of background information. Um, but basically, I'm here to talk about, uh, the park, specifically getting some engineering work done and a shoreline permit submitted. We kind of, we did, we, with the board's approval, we submitted an RFP back in January. We had a couple of responses to that. And our, we had somebody drop out, we had another person kind of say they could do it, but they were astronomically expensive. I think they, they quoted us a price of 10 grand, which made me want to quit my own job and go into engineering. Then we, um, started talking to Mark Sargent, who's here in town, um, and he offered to, uh, do some work pro bono for us, which is great. He was not able to do, he can only do the surveying portion of what's needed for the shoreline permit. Um, but Tom Barney out of Alton also submitted a proposal, um, and that was 1,500 bucks, uh, which is great. Originally, it was about two grand just for his work. And then once, uh, we notified him that Mark could do the surveying, he dropped his price by 500 bucks, uh, which is really great. You'll know that that dollar amount, that $1,500, does not include the cost of the permit itself. The permit itself is rather, I also want to quit my job and go into taking permit fees. The permit fee has a base fee of $300, and then it's 20 cents per foot of disturbed ground. After that, municipalities pay a maximum fee of 3,750. So no matter what, um, based on the number of feet that the engineer identifies that we disturb or will disturb with the design of the park, um, that fee for the permit will not go beyond 3,750. We're significant, we're hoping it's significantly less, but, you know, that's the maximum, which is what I have to bring to you. Tom's price is super, super reasonable. It's actually, I think he's knocking off quite a bit because of what we're doing and who we are, and, and I think that's great. And like I said, Mark Sargent, um, has already completed the surveying portion, and we're wait, waiting to get that back from him, that final survey plan. It could be in David's inbox. David's been away for a while, that would be. The purpose of this is to make sure that we don't affect, uh, Big River, or, you know, any of the, any of the waterway over there whatsoever. We really need it, obviously, to afford this park. The cost itself, there's a paragraph in that email from David about how he spoke to the grant officer. And basically what that boils down to is there's no additional grant funds that we can leverage. We kind of went to them and we're like, hey, we have more money, and they were like, no, you're cute. And David was like, I know. But, but yeah, so we did try to go back to them to say, hey, you know, this is a required portion of this. Is there any additional funds we could leverage? They said you can either take grant funds and lower your expenses elsewhere, um, you know, or you can fundraise around this. So that's what ultimately we'd like the board's approval to do, is to spend these funds. We are hopeful that we can raise those, um, additional funds to offset any reduction in the grant budget that we would have to do. We don't want to take away from, you know, a slide or something like that in order to afford this permit. So we're going to do fundraising, uh, to bring that amount back up, is the plan. That is all the information that I have for you. So what the, what the actual ask is, the multi-part ask, is to approve, um, Parks and Rec to expend the funds and hire Tom Barney to complete the engineering needed for the shoreline permit. And to also submit the shoreline permit. We would also like the board to approve the appropriate person. And I say appropriate person because, you know, whether it's Karen or, or David as the chair, or a member of the select board to sign that shoreline permit application so that we can submit it. Um, and then we'll take, of course, any feedback on the permit itself, which I don't have a strong knowledge base on, but can bring you back information and make sure that happens if you have.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, authorize, uh, Parks and Rec to expend funds and hire Tom Barney at the amount of $5,345, and also authorize a member of the board or delegated to the town administrator to sign the shoreline application to get the progress going. Up to?
Up to.
I, we're not totally sure until we know, so the total from Tom Barney.
Up to 5,345.
Yeah, yes.
By.
Yeah, so if we do up to 5,345, it comes in last, it comes in last.
Yep, so it'll be 1,500 for Tom Barney and his services, which will not change, and then also the funds to submit the shoreline application, which will not exceed 3,750. This remains though.
Yes, yes.
And Diane, when you said a member of the board, do you mean this board here?
Yeah.
To sign it, yes, or can?
Yes, it should be the chair.
Perfect, yeah, that's okay. Thank you, so I'll bring that back to people.
You're most welcome.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Uh, we do have bylaws for you, but I understand that you guys are super busy, so we will bring that back to you at a future date for approval. That's fun, fun stuff.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thanks.
I don't get to talk a lot about homework.
Good night.
Do you have an update on Memorial Day, Gary? Do we know the time? Be nice if we could put it on the website. Be right. Nobody wants to talk?
We'll open it up, the public input for 6:24. Nobody's on? Paving?
Isn't it like 400?
That's what I thought.
200 and 250 was
No, it was like
But I don't know, it's still in the, in the
Yeah, I don't think I have that. Grab it, bring it out. I want to say
I thought it was somewhere around five.
It's 500 some odd thousand.
What are you doing? Well, we haven't decided how many roads we're actually doing, or how many we are going to be able to do. Will it be a higher price? Right. Well, they're going to change anyway.
They know that, that we may have to take some project off depending on the price. Yeah.
The price of materials and everything right now, we have no idea what it's going to be come July, you know? Right? Yeah.
Hello?
I just heard her. I think you got to turn that up.
It, it's Margaret Cipriano.
Is there a Margaret?
Yes. First of all, your, your mic, Rick, went in and out. Your, your mic, Rick, went in and out, and I could not hear Gary or Ed at all. The only two who were clear in this meeting were Diane and Paula and Karen. I do have a question. Who did you award the mowing bid? Because I couldn't hear what happened there.
The mowing The mowing bid was awarded to mowing my grass off for $2,200.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Non-public that would be under C. And then you also wanted a non-public with the road agent. So whoever you want to take first, and I'm sorry, Scott was on here for 6:15. It's just listed as non-public.
What is the spot's non-public number? C, C as well. So, I'll make a motion to go under non-public, I would say 91-A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, C, personnel.
I.
You got to do, you got to do, you got to do the roll call.
I.
I.
That's the roll call for a real one.
I know.
Thank you. Good night.